All right, five minutes early, but okay.
Yeah, I did full sleep with the chair.
Sorry?
I did full sleep.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I think I had this one back inside. This is our plan. Whatever my office for a second. And, um, this is to others. And then there's speech that got out of here. Yeah, some speech again. Oh, my God. This year, dead. What a lot of spirits. And then this, you know, this speech right now. Oh, my God.
Hey, Mia.
Hi, Karen. How are you?
Good, you guys?
I'm good. I shouldn't answer for the group, okay? It wasn't very quiet to me.
Oh, God. I like to bring it. Thank you. First and foremost, I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm glad it's cool. I think that, yeah. It's cool. It's cool. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah. It's quite cool, I think, that, yeah. Get on. Joe calling, yes? Yeah. He was aware. It's my last glasses were progressive and I thought they... Yes. But I guess I could actually see a little bit. Like, I thought it was, like, blurred, because it's, like, those things. So, I said, this time I just want like this, so I'll just... I really can't. But I have to take them off. It's kind of ridiculous. So, but can you see what's down there? Oh, yeah, I mean, that's a thing. But it's, like, it's just, you know, I mean, they're kind of... These don't take... Yeah. Paper, thank you. Do you have a copy of mine over here? Um, uh, there should be. Right. Not you. It's not there, it's here. You guys... Oh, Freddie's not coming, right? No. Okay, oh, and then I am, right? Oh, that's right, yeah. Well, sorry, can I get... Can I see my... Or, or...
Have you ever had such a big stack in front of you?
Yeah, I know.
Freddie is a very distinguished older lawyer.
Welcome and thank you for choosing FreeConferenceCall.com. You're helping people around the world communicate for free. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash.
Yeah, I know. Hopefully it's...
If you are a host, press star now. Otherwise, please wait. If you please enter your PIN followed by the pound or hash. If you do not know your PIN, please enter pound or hash. Please announce yourself.
Vivian.
Hey, Vivian, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
Hi, Joe, you're on the air. It's a little bit after seven, but we're still... We are waiting on Ann.
Okay.
So that we have at least three of us here tonight. Freddie will not be joining us. So, we'll, uh, we'll see if she comes.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
It's Karen.
Do you need to have Ann's mobile number handy?
I only have her home phone number.
Yeah, I thought I had her mobile number, but I don't have it handy.
So, I did talk to her, um, a couple hours ago. Wish she would have been there.
Yeah. Well, it's not gonna work, I was just... I have a spot that's a...
So, I'm just gonna mute myself for a minute. Um, so if I'm a little slow on the draw, um, just wait for me to unmute.
No worries, thank you, John.
Um, should I step out and give her a call?
Yeah, would you mind? Because we should have three of us here for tonight's meeting. Thanks for your patience, folks, we're waiting for a third party. There are four of us on the board, but for certain parts of the procedure, we need three people so that things can be voted on if we do take a vote. So, we're reaching out to one of our other members who is right here in town.
She just parked her car.
So, I see that another meeting room is being prepared upstairs. Do you know what the timeframe is on that? It's a little bit larger than this room, so they're considering moving things up to that location.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of a long time. But that'll be nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they...
You made that?
Yeah.
Hi, Ann.
Uh, sorry I'm late. I have no idea. I'm just eating dinner, I'm like...
No worries. We just wanted to make sure we had at least three of us here for tonight, because Freddie is unavailable. Welcome all to the July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the Village of Paulan. We can, uh, do a roll call, please, Irving?
Uh, Tom Zarecki.
Here.
Ann Hartman.
Here.
Fred DeVito is absent. And Nick Worsley.
Here.
Can we all join for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, as it is a flag in the United States of America, to revoke which assistance, relations, underground, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda for tonight is an application for a use variance for ninety-eight Charles Coleman Boulevard, presented by Raymond, I think it's Finney, and Carla. We met with them on Saturday for a site visit. I'd like the applicant... I'd like to invite them to describe their use variance request to the board.
Good evening, I'm Donald Caffey, you know, Kathleen Rotsch, I've been in the office across the post office. I represent Mr. Finney. And, uh, I... There's a few things we have to... This, I have to just take care of. Number one is, we have the affidavit of mailing.
Thank you.
It indicates that twenty-three persons that were listed, including the applicant, were sent a certified mail. And, uh, we have certificates of mailing and we also have, I think, sixteen returned receipts. And one's not returned by my client, but we hope so.
Let's hope.
So, so, um, the, the other thing was that, um, on Friday, you know, three business days before this, we received something from the, your consultants, La Bella, and they indicated that we should be submitting not just the short EAF, but one with the EAF map, mapper involved. So, we ran it through. I have seven copies of those pages, so they're only differential pages. On the back is a summary of the differences. So, if you look on the back of those, uh, you can see where the differences are. These are all matters that really don't affect this in any way whatsoever, this, this property. The, the application here is for you to approve a use that's been in effect, we can prove more than twenty-one years, as have apartment. The village is well aware of it, there are three water meters, but you're only allowed two under the present zoning. And while we, we did not go through the process of trying to prove that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming use, it certainly has been what everybody's been treating this as for many years, including the village officials that have been there and they've been paying the water and sewer bill. I have a, um, and we have a letter from the tenant, which I will submit in a few minutes. But, um, the particular, uh, application here is just to approve the basement apartment that is there and has been there, and it is in good shape, the building inspectors looked at it. We have a couple small things that he would suggest, but other than that, um, he says that it's, you know, it's fine. That you've been to the site and you can see whether it's dangerous or not dangerous. So, when you look at the E, the EAF mapper summary report on the back of, of this, and inside, they, you know, they do populate some of the answers that are different than what we put in, because this is what we believe to be the case that was applicable, because we're doing nothing to the site. The site is already old enough. So, if there are questions about whether there's a bog turtle in the area somewhere, this doesn't affect the bog turtle at all. The, um, there was, there was also a question about the remediation site being nearby that's existed in the past, and my understanding is the boards have approved, and the village have approved other sites around here, uh, that indicate that there's remediation site nearby. But, yeah, this is fully developed, there's nothing that would change as a result of this, and this use has been going on, we can prove more than twenty-one years. So, uh, the, the other one is that, uh, there's a question, I don't understand this one, that there may be some national or, or regi... or state register of historic places that either may be, um, involved in the area or, at the very least, that they may be contemplating on the state side, that there's something there. This comes off of a state, uh, BEC form that, uh, I'm sorry, database, which pulls the information out, but it's not really site-specific, we can't tell. Uh, but your, but your, uh, your consultant did say that this should be submitted and that this should be an unlisted action, so there doesn't seem to be anything that's going on here. And a curious yes is, uh, is wetlands. Now, uh, I don't know that there are any wetlands near there, but they, but they just say the digital mapping information on local and federal wetlands and water bodies is known to be incomplete, so they put yes. So, the point simply is, is that these environmental issues I, I submit are, are inapposite and are irrelevant, anything that's part of this application. So, I, I just wanted to make sure that they, uh, they did that. And I did have a letter that I, um, that I have, um, so I give you this piece of email that I sent back to Vivian today that can, indicates a part of reasoning behind this. So, I was just, uh, asking you to, uh, consider that as well. So, uh, in the end, um, we, we do have, um, here, we've submitted, we've submitted everything here, but I do, but it is, you know, the important part of this is simply that, um, in order to, as your statute provides and as the case law provides, uh, for a use variance, uh, which we have to, you have to consider four factors. And one factor is, you know, are your unique conditions here. I don't know if you can get more unique than this. This has been here for twenty-one plus years. You've had people, uh, who are with the village have not only been through there, never complained about it or felt it was a problem, but importantly, the village has provided services. They've hooked up water and sewer to this place. So, it's hard to say that somehow or other this is not something the village contemplates. But importantly, it's, it's also, one of your village citizens has been living here for over twenty-one years. That's where we can prove simply that it's been over twenty-one years. And so, I have the, um, I have, again, seven copies of email from the tenant. Uh, she would pass that around. And this is the tenant who's had, been living there with her son, single mom. She has, it's an inexpensive apartment, she can stay there. She has a son who has actually, she, she works over at the CVS. Uh, she, and she has, um, the son is now, has a scholarship to Vermont State University that, uh, for her, for him to be eligible for it needs to be part of the village. Uh, so, these kinds of things, the human part of this thing has to be considered here. And if you, if you then say that this is illegal and she needs to be evicted, um, it seems that you're not, uh, considering all the factors. What makes this a constitutional provision where you have to, uh, the, the, the tent, the village has the right to restrict uses and, and say what they want to do with it is you, as the zoning board of appeals, provide that safety valve to make sure that you can apply judiciously the, uh, what should be happening here and how you apply these, um, circumstances to the use variance request. So, here, you have a, a, a building that was built in eighteen sixty. It's kept in very nice shape. It's across the street from a manufacturing facility. It's three doors down from a warehouse. It's on a county road, county group twenty, um, and people are living there and have been. This person's been living there for more than twenty-one years. Uh, so, under those circumstances, I submit this, this is unique. So, if you would grant it here, it's not gonna affect anybody else in the village. This is really unique. So, um, I think they, they touched all those bases. The hardship here was not created when, uh, Mr. Finney purchased this premises. The hardship was created many, many years ago, and people started living there, and the village connected the services to that. They've been getting the, the benefit of it and providing the services. And you have somebody here working here that, um, you know, we think, uh, it's important that you, that you allow them to stay. Um, the, um, the, the other thing is, you know, the rate of return on the property. And I'll give you some figures here for what, what we have. The building was purchased for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar mortgage at seven point six two five percent. So, um, and the rent collected, uh, that would be able to be collected if this tenant pays less than everybody else for the basement apartment is only forty, four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars a month. So, the total income would be only fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars per year. The taxes alone for the school land and village total sixty-eight ninety-two. Uh, the, uh, the amount of, of the upkeep of the property for mowing, landscaping, and snow removal, and a very small number for repairs is eighty-four hundred dollars a year. And then, um, but, uh, there are additional repairs of a very conservative estimate is two thousand dollars, uh, a year. Water, sewer, and, um, garbage are twenty-six fifty-eight a year. So, that the total amount of expenses is forty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars a year. And that's, that's a return of five thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and a return of, um, the, the rate of, of, uh, the return is three point eight percent. Now, the old rules, I used to be anything between five and ten percent is a reasonable return for real estate. These days, I submit it's higher than that, and this is much lower. So, this, um, is probably more in the neighborhood of half of what would be the, uh, the number that should be involved. Uh, where you would, if you went below that number, you have shown that you're, it's an unreasonable, uh, rate of return you're looking for in the property. And so, but if he gets that rent in, even though it's minimal, um, amount, it will still be, uh, enough for him to keep the client and, uh, I'm sorry, the tenant, and for him to keep the property running. Um, and then lastly, um, you know, the other, the other issue is whether, um, the, he will alter the character of the neighborhood. And we've talked about what the neighborhood character is here, county group, you know, the, the industrial, uh, facility across the street and down the street. Uh, under those circumstances, nobody's complained for over twenty-one years, but this is sitting there. And, you know, frankly, uh, there's, this has no impact at all on the, on the community. Perhaps a positive one. Uh, but certainly, the other thing to consider here as well is, um, the, we keep hearing about the crisis, affordable housing crisis. And this is, this has already, you know, we already have someone who, who has, uh, you know, a single mother taking care of a boy that's now going to college and working here in town. And this is your opportunity to say, yeah, let's, let's, let's keep this person here. Let's, let's approve the, um, the affordable housing for, for her. Uh, and, um, you know, you've seen the place. I don't see that anybody, nobody's told me that there's any kind of problem with the place. Everybody's felt it was good, including their building inspector, thought that it was good. He wants some, a couple small things to be taken care of, which my client, some of which my client's already done, and he's perfectly willing to do, do the remaining. So, I just ask you to, you know, for your consideration of that to, uh, and to, uh, and to, as I say, to judiciously follow your power, which, which really makes the, uh, the restrictions that the town puts on property makes it constitutional, because you are the safety valve for this. So, we ask you to apply judiciously in that. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Donald. That was a very thorough presentation for the board. I'd like to invite the board at this point to, uh, ask any questions or if you guys wanna have a discussion about any of the points that Donald made.
I'm just, I'm very clear. There's... Yeah, it's just, it's going through the motion, making sure you have a, uh, agreeable decision that, um, property's gonna work out for the community. But, you know, it's pretty clear.
And do you have any comments or questions or thoughts on, uh, on the information we've just had along with the site inspection that we all had?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Donald, you put together a, a lot of information... Uh, Donald, you put together a, a lot of information for us. One of the things I want to bring up is that, um, although services had been connected from the water department, the different departments in the village don't necessarily report specifically to each other. So the fact that the water department connected this property twenty-one years ago and never told the village that there should be some alert about, uh, some non-compliance issue is something that we really can't address and say, well, because that never came to us, it should be okay because one part of the village connected water or other services. Um, it is a different agency and they don't necessarily are required, they're not necessarily required to, to report to each other to have certain information given. Um, Vivian, do you have any records pertaining to this particular property or site?
Um, no.
Anything in addition to what we heard?
Not anything in addition that I can double check.
Okay, okay. One of the things that I'd, I'd like to get from you at some point, Donald, for the board is, um, some of the details of the, of the numbers that you just had read aloud to us. Uh, I wasn't able to write them down quickly enough and get some totals and all, but financial hardship is definitely one of the concerns, one of the, um, one of the criteria that are necessary to be met by the zoning board. Use variances are a lot more challenging to, uh, to approve than area variances. They have four criteria, as you know, and you, you address a number of them. And all four of them have to be met adequately, otherwise an approval wouldn't be allowed. And then that's, regardless of how we might feel about the project, that's just the, the legal requirements that we are bound by. Um, so I would like to get that, uh, from you at some point. Um, at this point, Karen and Joe, I'd like to invite you guys to, uh, to reflect and comment on some of the information you've just heard.
Joe can go first.
Joe can go first. Joe, I don't know if you heard that?
I did, yeah. Um, hi, so this is Joe Ariel. I'm the, um, counsel to the C V A. I just want to reiterate what, um, what Chairman said. Obviously, I've done all the relevant points of law that go into supporting, um, uh, an application for a use variance. But I think for the benefit of the board and the, and the public record, if we could get your, you know, those facts, um, in a, uh, in a written submission, um, so that that can be, uh, known to both the board and the public before we schedule a public hearing on it. And that would be my primary comment as far as the application itself. Karen, uh, you know, may have some more comments on specifics, but, uh, yeah, I just need to see those criteria of the, the board in a format that can be, you know, examined with some specificity and, uh, is a little more useful in, um, in review at a public hearing. So that, that's, that's my only comment.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
Uh, my only comment is that in your next submission, uh, those items of the short environmental assessment form that you don't feel are applicable simply state that they're not applicable and the reasons why, such as you just did in this meeting. It's just to build the record so we can demonstrate that we've looked at everything.
I, I, I did submit the documentation there that showed the modifications that were, uh, indicated by the mapper. And then I, after my cover letter, I explained why I thought they were, uh, inapplicable. But if you need something more, I have no problem.
She, does Vivian have that digitally?
Yeah, I, and I, and I have it both digitally and.
So then, so Viv, that should become part of a formal submission in addition to whatever they submit for next month.
Okay. You just handed this out too. I did see an email, but it was after I left for the day. Is that what this is? Would you just?
Yes, that's what that is.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the document that I sent to Vivian. But the, uh, the summary is on the back that shows the pinpoints, the four issues that were raised. And again, and I understand the village has done this before. They found these, at least some of these items on a project that's fully developed.
It's not the village finding this. It's just the E A F mapper is best practice for art, for projects that come in front of the boards because it provides data applicable to the site or within a certain radius of the site. So we just ask all applicants to use the E A F mapper because it's comprehensive. And then you explain away those things that don't pertain, which is what you've done, as you said.
Right. And, and if I, if I could say that what I did was I went to the village site. I used the, the short E A F form that was on the site. I completed it and sent it in. That's my original submission. Only after your consultant told me, uh, no, I was, Vivian sent me your consultant's, uh, report on Friday that I saw it and I said, well, I have to get to it. And I was not in all day yesterday. So it was a matter of getting it finished and getting it to you. I didn't consider these to be, uh, significant aspects of this. I don't think anyone looking at this reasonably could find that any of those four items have anything to do with keeping an existing tenant in presence.
Yes, I would agree with you. I think the, uh, the main point here of today's meeting is probably that you need to demonstrate, uh, financial hardship.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I, I, I did that orally, but I will, I will submit something to you.
All right. Thank you. So Karen, apparently because we don't have the updated form as part of the packet, we, should we not move on the unlisted action decision?
I think that's true. Um, I, I mean, I think we could do it all at once, but I, um, I'm sorry.
Apparently we need the updated form. Um, Donald says that he submitted something, but it appears there was something.
Oh, so we said we were going to do seeker, okay. Uh, for, for the action. Yeah, okay. So yes, you can do that because he submitted an updated form. We have it.
Okay, so, um, that's, that's something that we need to take a vote on, but we will list, we will classify this particular project as an unlisted action as it refers to seeker.
And I think you need to declare, um, yourselves lead agency for the review.
And, uh, I'd like to, uh, to declare the zoning board of appeals also the lead agency on this particular project so that we have the authority to do a seeker evaluation.
Second, then?
Yeah, a motion, a motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Declared our intent to become lead agency on this. Um, Donald, Raymond, Carla, at this point, um, we're going to wait until we get some detailed financials from you because we really need to evaluate that. From me, that seems to be probably the biggest point here, just roughly looking at the other elements.
Yeah, I just.
I'm sorry, Joe, come on.
I just, yeah, I just wanted, just for the applicant's sake, so they don't, you know, so when they make a submission, they've touched all the bases. I think the Chair is absolutely right as is, Karen. It, it does look like the primary issue that requires just some, some detail, and it may just be reiteration of what you said tonight, is the financial hardship. But, but for the sake of making sure we've got a complete record, you should touch all those, touch all four issues in, um, all four, four criteria in what you submit, just, just so that we've got all the boxes checked when the board goes to review it.
I, I made an oral submission about those other matters. You're telling me you want that in writing as well?
Yes.
We do, yeah, we do, Donald, I'm sorry. The thing is, we need this part of the physical record, the written record. Um, the zoning board, um, is required to meet these four requirements. If even one of them is not met fully, then we are not allowed to, to grant a var, a use variance. The group, use variance is very specific in its needs. So we really need this all in writing so that it's part of the record.
I, I also think, I mean, just to be fair, that submission that you made tonight, the oral submission that you made, I mean, it did touch on all the issues, but it's, it's, you know, it's being presented now orally to the board for the first time. Um, I, I just think it's, it's appropriate for you to just put, put your best foot forward in a written submission on all those points so the board has a little time to, to sit with those arguments and, uh, and try to move your project forward.
Okay. All right, so until, until we get the financials, um, we're going to wait on opening up, uh, a public hearing, uh, because what we'd like to do is have that additional information. We'll have to do this at, at the next meeting. We'll have some more of these details from you and then we can open up a public hearing for public comment.
So they noticed the public hearing for tonight. Will we have, will we have to re-notice or?
It's a question for Joe.
Actually, Joe, should we open the public hearing but keep it open? That's another, another possibility?
Because, uh, Vivian, Vivian's asking about whether it would need to be re-noticed.
I don't think it'll be re-noticed if we're just, if we're continuing to the next meeting.
So then we should open the public hearing tonight so that it has been done as per the notice Vivian sent?
Joe, that's.
Yeah, he could, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well.
And you should allow the.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's open up the public hearing. We can get some commentary. We'll keep the public hearing open for now so that it can be continued after we get additional information from the applicant in our next meeting.
Okay.
I think that covers all bases. I want to make sure people are happy and that we're, we're doing the procedures right and not giving Vivian a headache here with more notices.
Uh-huh, so, so we need to motion?
Yeah, we need to motion.
So you.
So I'd like to have a motion to open up the public hearing so that we can hear from our fellow villagers about the project at ninety-eight Charles Coleman Boulevard. Can I have a second?
A second?
All in favor of, of opening up a public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All have voted? Okay, the public hearing is open. At this point, uh, we'd like to hear from the, from the public on any commentary or questions that they may have for the applicant regarding this project at ninety-eight Charles Coleman Boulevard. Uh, we have someone in the back. If you could please stand up, identify yourself and speak loudly so that you're covered by our mic. In fact, if, if you don't mind coming up a little bit closer, our mics will pick you up better. Thank you, I appreciate it.
My name is April Mulkins and my mom and dad's probably directly behind ninety-eight. I'm just wondering, what does R three mean?
It's residential zone three.
Uh-huh.
All of the zones in the village are identified by number and they each have different, uh, restrictions that, uh, that they have upon them about what can be done or what can't be done.
So starting at Hudson Valley, Hudson, the plastics warehouse, and then one house, two house, and a third, are they all in residential? Are they all considered residential?
You know, Tom's kind of open right now.
If you start at Hudson Valley Plastics Warehouse.
It looks like, it looks like the property in question, April, just so you know, is partially in a B one zone. What does the B stand for?
Business.
Business, thank you. Uh, and the rest of the property is in R three.
So it looks like your parents' property would fall in the R three completely.
Okay, so what about the houses down the street from ninety-eight?
The houses further up the road.
No, down the street, ninety-six.
Everything down the street.
Is in the B one zone.
So it's business?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you want to step up here and take a look at the map.
Can I just, uh?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the site we're talking about here. And then there, in the backyard there. So if you think down towards the village, to your neighbor over here is in the, next corner of the B one zone.
And this is all, if this is all business?
It's all, yeah.
Hopefully that's helped you out. Do you have any questions additional related to that or?
Also recently bought, was it bought as a two-family or a three-family?
The home that was bought, uh, Donald or Raymond, do you want to answer this question?
What's the question?
When they, when they bought the house, was it a two-family or a three-family?
It's always been a three-family for the past twenty-one plus years.
But it was bought, is it three-family?
It's used, it's, it's been used, it's.
Okay. No, that, I just wanted to know the zoning because I haven't, I'm coming to see about something else.
Sure, sure. Yeah, it appears it was purchased.
We have no problem with, with the, the three partners. Fine, fine with us.
All right.
It's the same tenant for twenty-one plus years.
Right. Thank you, April, for stepping forward. Um, does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding this project at ninety-eight Charles Coleman Boulevard? Yeah? Okay, we're going to keep the public hearing open for the next meeting, but we're going to stop taking comments right now. Um, at this point, the board's not going to take any action on this particular project because as I mentioned, we want to get some more detailed information from you, Donald, specifically about the financials. That to me seems to be one of the more, one of the challenging things that we have to meet the criteria of in order for us to be allowed to grant a positive decision on a variance for a use variance. All right? You've been to the property, it does look nice. Um, and I understand why you're all here and, uh, we look forward to getting more information from you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Raymond, thank you. Kyra, thank you very much. You too, thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is fifteen Memorial Avenue. Um, we will be continuing the public hearing on this.
It was never opened the last time.
Um.
I'm sorry.
Oh, for one of the variances.
Right, that's, I'm sorry, I apologize.
You're, um, that's okay, there's a lot going on here. There's a, you're continuing the public hearing on what I think is generally labeled variance to, Karen, which is the bathroom variance.
Yeah, the bathroom pass-through. That one we had opened a public hearing.
Right? Um, and, and then you're going to open and let, you know, we can do that, we, we can even do that now and let all this be on that, that, uh, the public hearing record. But anyway, you're going to open it for the first time on the, um.
On the access.
Access issue, yeah.
Well, why don't we wait a little while on, on that for now? Why don't we, um, invite our applicant?
In a presentation.
Yeah, well, let's invite our applicant to describe any new changes for the project. Dave Daniels is the owner of the property at fifteen Memorial. Dave, can you, uh, inform us on any changes and any new information that we should be made aware of regarding your project?
I'd be happy to. Um, okay, so, um.
And this is with respect to the public hearing that's currently open?
This is just a refresher of the current project and any new information that pertains to any of the variances in any part of the project, just so that we're.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I didn't understand that.
No worries, no worries.
Okay, um, so, I'm, I'm, in no, in no particular order, but I guess, I guess a couple of threshold issues for the, the issue of the access through the stone wall, the, the two-foot, uh, one-inch access that was requested. In our last submission, we, we amended the application to make that two feet, six inches because that's been raised as an issue. It's, it's apparently two, two-foot-one in some places and two-foot-six in another, in others. So to be on the safe side, we would like to amend the application to, and we did submit that in our, in our application. Um, the, um, the other issue that came up was, um, well, the main, the main issue that had come up in the, in the initial presentation was that the, whether the Z V A had jurisdiction to hear this matter because of a question about the existence and/or extent of the, of the easement, uh, the eighteen eighty-two easement that runs, runs through nineteen Memorial. Uh, subsequent to that, we have submitted, uh, prima facie evidence of the existence of that easement, including two surveys, um, letters from two surveyors. I have an additional, uh, additional information that I received from Nicholas Chappas, who is the, uh, surveyor who, uh, I recently became aware had, had acquired the records of James Devine, who had done, uh, survey work. He was the primary, he did most of the survey work, I think, for years in the, in the village. And, uh, inside engineering, apparently acquired their records. And they, they had in their file actually a survey that was prepared not for fifteen Memorial's owner, but for, um, the nineteen Memorial's predecessor and title, which shows very clearly the easement, um, very clearly the easement on their property.
So this was done by the previous owner of nineteen Memorial?
Yes.
Repeating what you said, I just want to be.
Frye's, Robert Frye and Kathleen Frye. And, um, it specifically references the entire driveway. It's not, it's not limited in any particular way. It just says arrow, it shows the easement, you know, how people.
For the record.
Yeah.
Oh, you submit this?
No, no, that's new.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so in terms of, in terms of that, I mean, honestly, none of that is really necessary for you to act. Um, what's been happening in the meantime is the, uh, the owner of nineteen Memorial filed suit, uh, to try to, to try to get the court in Dutchess County to issue a temporary restraining order. What's been happening in the meantime is the, the owner of nineteen Memorial filed suit to try to, to try to get the court in Dutchess County to issue a temporary restraining order and a stay to stop both boards from acting on this until the extent of the easement was, was adjudicated. The, the court did not, did not grant the temporary restraining order, the issue of a stay, which, which is, I'll leave, I'm not going to get into a legal thing, that'll be for the village attorney to advise you on, but I, I don't, I don't think there's any merit to that request for a stay because in general, in order to, in order to stop an action of, of a planning board or zoning board, it just doesn't happen. You, you let them decide, and then if you're not happy with the result, you can bring an Article seventy-eight. I, I couldn't find any, any precedent for that, and none was cited in the, in nineteen Memorial's papers relating to that issue. So I do think that that's a red herring, and it's unfortunate because it never should have, it never should have been raised as an issue before these boards. The case law is clear, and it's, it's taken a lot of time and a lot of money and delays and a lot of lost revenues as well because of something that was, should have been, should have been adjudicated in, in, in Dutchess County Court, which it is now being done. But there's a survey that they have.
Dave.
Yeah, Joe.
Dave, can I just interrupt just real briefly, and it may be that I'm just not hearing everything, I may even know the answer to this, but for the benefit of the record, what was the result? I know that the action itself is still pending and will take some time to resolve. What was the result of the stay of?
It wasn't.
Orders of both?
It's a, there's a, well, there's a briefing schedule, so it's going to be, it's going to be briefed. We, we're going to submit our brief in two weeks, and then.
Okay.
And then the nineteen Memorial will submit their brief, and so that's going to go on probably for quite some time, again, unless the court decides to decide it early.
Right.
So that, and I know that Mr. Barnett, who is your, your colleague, was in agreement with, with what I was saying about the fact that there, there, you know, issues that should not be before these boards as to the existence of the easement, but I did.
Yeah, we've, we've, let me, again, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
For your sake, actually, and for the sake of the public and the board. Well, I think, I, I wanted to break in for that purpose, to say exactly that. I, I think the prudence that the board showed initially when these issues were raised was, was wide. I do, I, I, and I think I've mentioned before, it's, the same issue came up the planning board, so maybe it hasn't come up here, but I do want to put on the record that the, the easement issue between the two private parties is not of concern to this board, and if this board were, and I do believe there's been sufficient prima facie submissions with respect to the easement for this board to act on the merits of the, of the easement. So I just, I, I only, I say that just to, you know, you don't feel compelled to give that full history because I, I, I do agree, I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you. The one other thing I should mention, just, just to kind of complete the record, there are, there are, I submitted two deeds that were obtained by Quaker Abstract. They ran a deed chain on, on nineteen Memorial, and two of the deeds expressly referenced that the conveyances of that property to the prior owners were subject to the easement. Sometimes deeds expressly include things, sometimes they don't in New York, but in this case, there are two separate deeds that, that have the reference to that easement. So the other, the next thing would be, there was a, in, in La Bella's memo, there was a, a reference to, to fire access and, and getting permission from, from the village, and that, and that action couldn't, couldn't proceed without that issue being resolved. I would request that, that whatever, whatever, you know, approvals or, or appearances are needed before the village board to, to explain that issue, I'm happy to do it. I don't believe it should hold up this application for the reason that the, the, the access is, is in an area that has been used as a public street for thirty, forty years. It is a public street. It, it's become a public street by what's called prescription under Village Law six dash six twenty-six, and there's a, there's a, when you're on a public street, which this property now is, you have a right of access for fire, for driveway, whatever you want. So it isn't, I don't think an approval is needed. I'm not opposed to presenting that to the village board if that's what's decided, but I, I don't, under those circumstances, I think it's a ministerial thing that should not, should not hold up the, the processing of the application. If you want a condition on that issue, whatever, I have no problem with it.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Are you saying that the village parking lot is a public street?
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
Yeah. It, 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 it absolutely, it's, it's, you know, it's been, it's, the case law, the, the, it's in the highway law, it's in the village law, it's, it's very, very clear that when you have, sometimes there's issues, well, was it intermittently maintained? Was it, you know, was it sometimes used by the, you know, here we had, you know, the DMV was here for, I don't know, twenty years, and, you know, then he uses that street for his deli at deliveries, and the upper CVS lot, which I happen to now be leasing, but that's, that's relatively recent, also has access to it. So it's been, you know, in fair, I mean, you know, it's basically, everybody should be treated the same on that, and so that's, and then the fire department had, had come up, come up and, and had, had stated that the fire protection issue would be resolved as long as they, because they could come up there, as long as I removed the shed that had been on the property that was sort of between the current driveway and parking area, as well as the, the large dead tree that was on the, you know, that was sort of blocking that as well. So that was taken down and at considerable expense, it was a huge, it was a very large tree. But, so that, you know, I guess I don't know if, if we want to sort of address these since there's, there's several issues. I don't know whether Joe wants to weigh in on that, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I just ask one question, Joe, first? I, I setting aside what, you know, approvals and, I know that the letter from the fire chief asked that it be unobstructed with vehicles, by vehicles, so the access be unobstructed. So how will you?
Well, there's no parking, it's a clear, there's a huge lane there that's not.
Right, it provides access to the CVS lot, right? So it's an access way?
No, no, not even that, but it, it, there's no, there are no parking spaces if you drive up from, from Main Street, there's a clear path.
Up until that bend.
Well, you.
Right.
No, even, I mean, between the prop, between my property and that parking lot, there are no parking spaces other than, you know, way off to the side.
Right, but I mean, I understand there are no striped parking spaces there, but is it, like, is there a sign now that says no parking or no loading? Like, how will you prevent cars from ever parking there?
Listen, I have no problem putting a sign up. I, I, I should, you, you get into, does every property need to have a, I mean, if you have a street with a cul-de-sac, you don't have, I, I don't think it's, again, if that's what you want.
I mean, I think the difference is the residential versus commercial fire code, to tell you the truth. I mean, I think that's part of this, but I don't pretend to know the fire code that, it's just there are fire lanes for a reason, right? That's all I'm asking about, is how do we maintain that it's unobstructed?
Yeah, but again.
Yeah, here's.
Can I just say one more thing, Joe, before you?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I just want to, you know, there, there are requirements in the, you know, in the, in the fire code for twelve-foot access lanes, you know, for all properties, and, but there's nothing about not blocking them or whatever. Of course, I'm not going to block them, it just sort of creates this, this issue of, all right, well, now, now it needs, it's going to be striped and it's going to be signage, now, now the village has to get involved, and again, however you want to do it, I, I'm, you know.
Well, it's not me, it's.
No, I didn't, you.
No, I know, I'm just saying it's, it's the, the people that are reading the fire code on the village, villages' behalf have different opinions than what you're explaining to be the applicable fire code. So that just has to be reconciled, is my point.
Well, it's, listen, whatever, whatever you guys decide, go ahead, Joe, yeah.
This is, yeah, so from the point of view of the, of the ZBA, again, just for the benefit of the public, for the benefit of the ZBA members, this, the, the fire department's letter just leaves sort of, it has this one unclosed loop, which is, as Karen mentioned, it talks about it being unobstructed. If, if the fire department is okay with whatever, how would I put this, I want to say confirmation, there's a better word, but what, if, if we get clarity that whatever representations the applicant's able to make with regard to it being unblocked, I mean, that, the issue, the issue's not whether or not it's an accessible street, and I don't think the fire department's letter asked that question either. I think it, it clearly seems, you know, like, like it is an established street, and like they could get in there without that tree, which Dave took down, and if it's unobstructed by cars. I don't want to opine on what, everything that you're talking about, Dave, like what do we need to do to make the fire department happy that that won't be obstructed? I just want to close that loop. I think the board, I should, should say aye. I think the board would just want that loop closed as a condition of a variance if we're inclined to grant it. Like, we just need to know that the fire department knows what you're proposing with respect to, you know, how you're going to provide that access they described in that letter. And I do think the difference is because they can't get to you through that, through your own property drive, and because of the commercial, the commercial fire code. So it's just, I, I, I don't, we're not trying to be pedantic, but I just, I just think it's a little loop, and I don't want to opine, just like you don't tonight, Dave, on precisely how that gets accomplished. I just would like, I think the board would just like to know that the, that the fire department's comfortable with, however you nail that down.
Yeah, no, I agree, I, I have no, I have no problem with that, Joe. I think that, that's a, that's a prudent approach, and I certainly don't want to, you know, go against whatever the fire department requires. So I think we're on the same page on that, if we.
All right, good. And, and I want to make clear, this is all, this is all conversation, including anything else that comes up at tonight's public hearing, this is all conversation leading up to the board's consideration of what to do. So none, none of this should be read or interpreted by, you know, by, by anybody with an interest in the outcome as heading in one direction or another. We're just trying to dot all the i's and cross the t's so that, because we've got to wait for the secret circulation anyway before there can be a vote, just want, just like the last application, for the board to have everything in front of it that it needs so that they can make a move.
Yep, that, you, that was a perfect lead-in because that was the next thing I was going to bring up is the, is the seeker. So the planning board did an uncoordinated review, and they, they declared it a type-two action for their, for their purposes. We now have the, the ZBA with the variance, and I, I, I agree, it's, it's unlisted, I, you know, given the kind of thing it is, it's, anyway, it's unlisted, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that. And the, the other, the only other involved agencies that, that were referenced tonight were the, the Balling Joint Sewer Commission and the, and the, and the village board, potentially, if, if, if they need to be involved. I, I would submit that both of those boards, those actions are ministerial. I mean, like you said, the fire, the fire department is going to make the call, and that can be a condition, and so I don't, I don't really see the need to have, to have a coordinated review here. It's kind of going, you know, it's different than what the, what, well, the, the planning board didn't, didn't need to do seeker, but I, I just think that those are both ministerial actions that you could avoid it if you, listen, if you need to, again, I'm not, I'm not going to object if you decide to do it that way, but I really think that, given the nature of these, of these variance requests, that, you know, they're really, I mean, I've been through the EAF and the, and the criteria, I, 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 it's, I just can't come up with anything that would remotely rise to the level of anything that would have a significant impact on, on the environment. We're talking about a two-foot access way and, and, you know, an issue regarding going through two rooms. Those are not the kind of things that, again, not, not to say that you couldn't, you know, not approve those, but from an environmental perspective, I don't think there's any, there's anything there that would require anything other than an uncoordinated review. So, I'll, I'll stop on that, maybe, and then if you want, do you want to talk about that, Joe and Karen, before I proceed, or?
I think from, from my perspect, I'm sorry, I was going to say, from my perspective, I would say thanks for that information. I think, let's, let's proceed tonight. I think, I can't, now I can't even remember if we officially opened the public hearing, I don't think we officially did, right?
We, we have not on variance number one yet. We opened up the public hearing on variance number two at our previous meeting.
Yeah, and the one thing I'm going to suggest is because of the, because of the, you know, the nineteen Memorial, they, they, you know, they, they talked about abandonment of the easement, and I'm not exactly sure what happened in terms of the, what happened at the last meeting, in terms of whether it was brought up and adjourned or not, so I'm, I am concerned that, and then there's the, the matter of, you know, the small adjustment in the easement request. So I, I, I'm going to just suggest that, you know, even though I hate to do it, but I'll have to re-notice it before anything, any action's taken, just to be on the safe side.
Well, I mean, that sounds like a smart idea, too.
Yeah. So, just to avoid.
And we could certainly play it that way, too, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Especially if the applicant's request.
Yep. So I guess the, you know, and I did submit an addendum to, to, to the variance request on the access way, and I, I guess the, the main change was first that, you know, that, the, the inches, but then the second one was, in the original application, I had stated that this was arguably a self-created hardship, because at the time, I believed that the stone wall that's on nineteen Memorial was ancient. I just, that's what it looked to me, and I just assumed it was. I subsequently found out that it's, it's not, according to the people who sold me the property. It was constructed by the current owners of, of nineteen Memorial shortly after, after they put up a wooden fence in the same area. So they, my, the prior owners, and this is in the building department records, obtained a building permit, and it provided for a twelve-foot access way on their, on their, you know, between their fence, and it turns out that it was slightly less than that, and I asked why, and they said because that was what, that was what they had available for the gate of the type of fence they had. So, subsequent to that, the, the stone wall went up, and, and I could not, we could not find any record of a building permit. It, it, my opinion is that that stone wall is in violation of ninety-eight twenty-two F, which requires the maintenance of a twelve-foot, twelve-foot access lane. It, it created a violation of the, of the zoning code for, for an access way that had been there for, you know, for, for, you know, a hundred and some odd years. So I don't, again, I, it, I'm not going to, whatever the village decides to do with that is up to them, I'm not, I'm not going to be, well, that, that's up to them, but I, I, this variance could, you know, I'm, it's out of an abundance of caution because I can't control when that, when that might happen or what court action, so, but I just wanted the board to be aware that, you know, this is something that, you know, and when the, when the fences went up, they both, you know, whatever, they, they weren't aware, or, or I, I can't say, you know, what, what, what their thought process was, but I took, I took the fence down, so I corrected the violation on, on my property. And, and I, I should add also that the other thing that, that came to my attention is that we've been talking about this being historically a two-family and that it was converted to a one-family ten, ten years ago or so by my, by the person who sold it to me, but I came to learn, I just, I should have known, but it's, it's not, single family is not a permitted use in, in the B one zone, which is where this is located, so I don't, I, I think officially it's still a two-family. So that, you know, that's just a, I think, a relevant consideration in terms of the arguments that are being made about the intensity of the use, which is, as I stated to the planning board, I mean, this is a, this is going to be a four-key hotel, so there are four, accessed by four different, you know, guest units, and, you know, our, our occupancy rates run anywhere from, you know, thirty to sixty-five percent over the course of the year. During the, during the summer months, our busiest months, in the fall, people can park on the village streets, and they often do because, you know, they find it convenient to be at McKinney and Doyle and park overnight. So the, the, on average, again, sometimes we'll be, I hope we'll be full, but, but it's, it's, this is not going to be an intensive use, and, and I would submit that the permitted uses of a two-family house, I mean, it could be a group home, it could be a, a single family is. It could be a, a single family is, you know, is defined very broadly. You could have, you could have a family with 10 kids with 10 cars. So I don't, I don't think that, again, it's, it's, in any event, it's, it's a de minimis amount of cars for a property in the B1 zone, which is, you know, one of the largest properties in the B1 zone. And I'm not changing the footprint. I'm, I'm keeping it exactly as it is. There's no additional bedrooms. We're actually eliminating one of the rooms to turn it into a bathroom. So it, I just, I just don't think there's any, any merit to the, the argument that this is going to somehow impact the six families that are in the apartment house next door. It just, I just don't see how that's possible. But, one second.
Ken, just so you know, I've seen you raise your hand patiently several times. And as soon as Dave is done, then we'll.
I so much appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No worries. I just want you to know you've been seen.
I will say that one of the, one of the, in the, this is in the submission that I think it was July 3rd to this board. I did, I did point out that the, that the 19 Memorial's traffic consultant had, had argued that, that this, there was insufficient access. And the way that they were proving it is to, there was a picture showing cars blocking the driveway, which they're not allowed to do. I mean, they, they need 12 feet for their own parking. But the cars on that property park all the way at the end, right against my property line. So how they would, if, if, if they're saying that it's too narrow for the cars coming into, to my property, I don't, I don't, it's not going to be wide enough for them either. So I just think that kind of, that argument just kind of falls apart for that reason. The other, the other thing that, that was stated was that there's a problem with, with turning onto Smith Street. And, and in support of that, they showed a picture of a car right across from, you know, on Smith Street, on the other side of the street, along the sidewalk, you know, right, right next to the driveway, as you're pulling out of the driveway, you'd be kind of pulling towards it. But what they didn't point out is that there's no parking, that was illegal parking. The parking sign is, is up Smith Street, well away from, you know, any cars that would be turning onto Smith Street. I've been in and out of that property, you know, probably hundreds of times, dozens, whatever. And it, I've never, there's never been an issue. So. I just want to make sure I don't miss anything here. I'm just doing one second. Oh, and then, so the other thing I just want to mention, you know, there's been a lot of correspondence about what the ZBA is going to be deciding about 12, you know, about the entire driveway and the like. And, and there, there's only one issue that you guys are considering and that's the two-foot, six-inch, that's it. It's, it's other stuff is not, you know, because you're an appellate, you've got jurisdiction over variances and you've got jurisdiction over interpretations. The only, the only thing that's been requested by, by me is, is the variance, that variance and the variance for the, for the overcrowding ordinance. And I guess, let me, let me just flip to that very quickly. You know, there was some discussion at the last meeting about, you know, the, the nature of a variance from that kind of a, that kind of a statute. In chapter 53, if you read the introductory section of chapter 53, it, it talks very, very expressly about, this is all about avoiding overcrowding, unsanitary conditions, you know, the types of things that we're, we're not going to have that. I mean, we have, we have an existing property. I think we've demonstrated that we, that we are good citizens, that we maintain a pristine property. We get, we get the highest reviews. And, and one of the main things we always get is how clean we are and how, you know, how neat. And so I just, I don't think that, I don't think that, that ordinance was in any way intended to apply to a use like this. I think it was intended to, you know, to address severe overcrowding. And, and, you know, again, we're going to have people who are in the same unit, probably families most of the time. And, or, you know, two people who just want a little extra space. And so they may go through and the, the rooms that they're going to be passing through, they're going to probably, we have finally decided, probably going to be convertibles, you know, so people can use them as sitting areas or if they need, you know, a bed, they can do it. So it isn't, it just doesn't, you know, I don't think the spirit of that law is what, is what, and there is, there is a provision in the, in the ordinance that allows for variances for that very reason. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Ken, you have been raising your hand patiently. I think you have a few things to say.
Are you going to open the public hearing?
No, I don't. I'm not here to open the public hearing. I've got some questions.
I think you had some commentary about some of the things that you were bringing up.
Let me, can I, let me, let me just jump in real quick. And I'm not trying to get in your way here. But Dave, do you want, if we're going to open a public hearing, can I like to open it before people from the public?
Joe, I don't, I don't want to open a public hearing. I need some rules as to how we're going to conduct this public hearing so I understand how to prepare for it. Because the rules are very important to me.
Yeah, no, I'm asking, I'm asking Dave, I'm asking Dave, Dave, what is, I thought you said that you thought it would be most prudent to do the public hearing next time.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. No, I'd like, I'd like to, to, to have the public hearing be open. Because any, you know, any, just because of the neighbor, they don't get special treatment. I mean, it's.
That's fine, if you want to open it now.
They have no more standing than anyone else.
So in that case, I want to let's open the public hearing before anybody from the public speaks.
We have no objection here.
Sure, Ken, so hold, hold on just a moment. I'd like to make a motion to open up, open up a public hearing. Now, we've previously opened up the public hearing on variance number two, which is the bathroom pass-through issue. What I'd like to do is open up the public hearing today for variance number one, which has to do with the access width, that 12-foot something that is going to be asking for a variance of two-foot, six inches at its maximum. Do we have a second to open up a public hearing for variance number one?
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the public hearing is open. And now we will invite Ken Stenger as part of the public to comment on some of the information that we've just heard.
What I, what I, I'm going to ask is for you folks to give me some understanding of the rules that are going to apply here. Because I think what Joe said is very important. At the end of the day, after you've heard all the evidence, you're going to make a decision whether or not variance in front of you applies to 9822F, I'm, I'm sorry, and whether to grant it as a variance from the requirements in 9822F. And so what happened to me today was I kept looking to see whether or not there was any submissions to this board. And there, there weren't any. I finally, Mr. Ariel sent me 200 pages that had been previously submitted to the planning board about a month, a month ago, which I sent a copy to you folks as soon as I got it. And so I'm really not, not prepared to go into the merits of this, but I thought it'd be a perfect time to talk about the rules. Because the evidence is going to be, as, as been pointed out to you, a quasi-judicial body. And as Joe said, look, at the end of the day, if you feel that this evidence provides enough basis for you to say that a variance should be granted for 9822F, then you're going to grant it. But how we get to that evidence is why, why I want to speak. And there's one other question that really I need some direction from your board because I can't get it from Mr. Mater. So when we were last here, the issue was how wide, how big is this variance? How many feet is it? Because 9822F says that the application for 15 Memorial LLC must be supported by a 12-foot wide corridor of access to the nearest public highway. It says 12-foot wide. And we reviewed together the fact that the statements were all over the planning board, that in fact, Mr. David, Mr. Daniel says to the planning board numerous times, and you have the correspondence, which I'm going to put all into the record after tonight, that we, we have that corridor. Now, the code doesn't say how do you get that corridor. It doesn't say you have to show an easement. It doesn't say you have to show that it, you own it. But it's just got to be 12 feet of access that's unimpeded. And that's the dimension. And we talked about the fact that in order to determine an area variance, you have to determine how big the area variance is. So therefore you have to know how wide is the dimension of that corridor. And we only talked about it in terms of the breach in that stone wall, which, by the way, at some point to come up to my client's property at any time and walk it and go look at it. Whether you can do it, whether you're allowed to do it within your own process, you're invited. It's the best way to go see how this thing works. So if you recall, there was a survey here. And it said, it was by Mr. Collins, I believe, or Mr. Burgendorf. And it said, its comment was, we can't mathematically calculate the location of this easement. And there was an issue then we all discussed that without that calculation, that mathematical calculation, that's an impediment to granting a variance because you can't say how big the variance is. Okay. And then at some point during the night, there was a second survey from the same survey that did not have that comment written on it. And your board, you, you folks read it. And I think that's the reason, we were supposed to have the public hearing that night and, or it was supposed to open, I think. And my clear recollection is that that didn't open because that was missing, that statement. And because your board wanted to know how wide was this corridor of access in order to measure how wide the variance should be. One foot, two foot, three foot, what is it? So there are two things that happened as a consequence of that. First thing is that I wrote a letter to Mr. Mater, who was the building inspector. And I said to Mr. Mater, my client owns 19. What I would like you to do is make a determination if a 12-foot wide physical corridor of access exists on its property. And if it doesn't, I would like you to report it to the ZBA because then, then Mr. Daniels would properly ask for an area variance for the whole length of this corridor of access. And I said, and that was my letter to him of May 30, 2024. And it's, you're right, the only, the only thing in front of you right now is just that gap in the wall. But what about the 12-foot corridor that's supposed to go the rest of the way? So I wrote him a letter. I said, give me a determination. And he said, on June 5, and I'm going to give you all these letters to put in the record, Mr. Mater said, I quote, "I write in response to your inquiry as to the reference application with compliance of section 9822F of the Village of Paul and Co. As you may know, in connection with their planning board review application, the applicant in the referenced matter is seeking a variance from section 8922F. Matter is pending before that board and should be followed there." I spoke to Mr. Ariel after that and said, well, what does that mean? We only have this one application and I would like a determination. If he can say the 12-foot's there, fine, then maybe I take an appeal. Or he can say it's not there and then maybe Dave takes the appeal. But it seems to me that that corridor, the point of interest was, as it seemed to me after speaking to the board, was not just the gap in that stone wall, but was the whole length of the driveway. The response I got was this issue is already in front of your board. And I'm assuming, and I've, I've not had an opportunity to speak to you since because we've never had another meeting. So I am assuming that that is not the case. And I'm going to report, if that, if I'm mistaken, please tell me. But if, if that issue is not before the board, or the board doesn't consider it in front of it, I will, I will let Mr. Mater know tomorrow and ask him to give me a prompt determination. Because it would make sense, from my perspective, that both issues be checked out at the same time, that they not be done in piecemeal. So is, is it before you? I don't, it doesn't sound like it is, but is it?
Yeah, Ken, I don't want to be, to interrupt you. So I can either jump in now or.
Jump in now, Joe, jump in now.
Joe, before you do, can I just, can I just respond to one of the?
I think we need to be a little bit more paused in our back and forth. Let's, let's let Joe talk now.
Agreed.
So the, the letter you got from, from Mr. Mater, Ken, answered the question that you presented, within the jurisdiction of the building inspector. He, he, I, I would not advise him, nor do I expect that he would go further than that in reviewing this issue for many of the same reasons that were put in front of the board tonight with respect to its, the easement, the, the question of the precise width, or frankly, even whether it still exists, which seems to be connected in some way with your broader question, or can be used for this purpose, et cetera. All those issues are part of a private easement dispute that are no more the business or interpretive, within its interpretive authority of the building inspector than they are of the ZBA. So there's nothing else to be done on those questions, in, in my view, respectfully. And you can make a pitch for that if you want to submit something after this. We, you know, I, I heard what you said. It's always well reasoned, I understand. But I just, I, I don't think, and, and, and I wouldn't advise the ZBA to comment further on it either. The, 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 I mean, I just, I'll, I'll stop there and, and I don't want to get, you know, back and forth. I invite you to submit.
I won't, I won't do a back and forth. I don't, I just want to summarize my position and I'll move on. Fair enough. I don't want, we're not here to debate, Joe, especially.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you can hang up the phone on me, what is that? So my point here simply is this, Joe, that I'm not asking anybody to tell me anything about the easement. I'm asking you to just read your statute. Your statute says it has to be 12-foot wide. And because it says that, you have to have evidence in front of you that, that demonstrates that you can say, I believe it demonstrates it's 12-foot wide. Or it's not 12-foot wide, it's 10 and a half foot wide, but we're going to give it a foot and a half variance. So Joe, that's my point here. My point is, I don't know how you do that for just a gap in the wall and not do it for the rest of the road. And I, and I do think that I'm entitled to a determination from Mr. Mater, which he apparently will not give me. I'll write him another letter tomorrow and see. So I'll get off that topic now. That's my point here. Now, I would get, go back to the topic, though, of the width because we had a good conversation the last time I was here.
I actually want to interrupt you for a moment, Ken, just because.
Go ahead.
And I've got so many papers we've looked through here, but I seem to remember seeing some information about the width of the existing driveway at 19 Memorial. Can you tell me what that dimension is?
21 feet.
It's 21 feet from, from east to west in that driveway. And a minimum of 12 feet is needed in this particular instance.
A minimum of 12 feet of the corridor is, is, you have to show you've got it, so.
I, I just wanted, because I remember seeing something about it. I remember thinking.
No, you're right, you're right.
That seems like it's, it might be adequate.
Tony, is it 21 feet driveway wide, the width at the road by Smith?
In certain, in certain spots, yes.
Okay.
Do you know what the minimum might be, Tony?
I, I do not.
No, okay.
We will get those back to you.
That'd be great.
No, no, I know and I get it. I appreciate, I appreciate a factual exchange so much. I understand your point. So we'll get that. But the last time we were here, there was a que, and this goes to my issue of process. The last time we were here, Mr. Burgendorf gave a survey that said, I can't mathematically calculate the area of this easement, which then I said, you can't calculate the area of this corridor of access. And then there was another survey in which that comment was removed. And I know your board said, look, we're not going to do the public hearing. Bring Mr. Burgendorf back. We want to hear what happened to that note. I was there, I heard it said. And it goes to the point that I would like to mention on, with respect to evidence. I, I, this is a very informal hearing. Neighbors can come and talk. I think affidavits from neighbors are perfectly fine. But we had a central question here, which is you've got to be able to measure it. Well, my argument would be that your board, in order to grant that variance, has to be able. board, in order to grant that variance, has to be able to measure some access point somewhere that's at least 12 feet. And Mr. Burgendorf said he couldn't do it. Now, I got some papers here today. I don't know when they were delivered to you, but I got them around 12 o'clock today, 200 pages worth, which is another thing about process. You can't do that. Not, if we were going to public hearing tonight, that'd be terrible. We're going to put it off. That's fine. But, and there's a statement from Mr. Burgendorf saying, "I've changed my mind." There's a statement from another surveyor in there that says, "I've looked at all the surveys. They're not math, you can't figure this out mathematically. And, but nonetheless, I think all the surveys are correct." I think something that critical, if the board believes that that fact is critical to its determination, those folks ought to come in and talk to you, and talk to me, because it's real easy to write a letter saying, "I changed my mind." You got three, you got two separate opinions from Mr. Burgendorf. You should have the opportunity to measure whether against the other and make a determination. I think that as far as a public hearing with, because I looked at some of these, the 200 pages, there's some affidavits in there from prior owners. Okay, fine. You know, they live in North Carolina. That's easy. But if you're going to present professional engineering proof in support of this application, I only ask that it be done in person so that it can be heard by you. I'm not going to argue this case one way or the other. I am going to say I did not ask the board to stop you from having a public hearing. You should have a public hearing. I've asked, it's been five months since we stood before you. We welcome the public hearing to get as many facts as we can in front of you. And we all agree that it will be the same court that says whether or not there's an easement there or a fee owner, but it will be you to say whether or not there's a 12-foot corridor of access. And if you say it's there, then there won't need a variance. If you, if it says it's there, it's 12 foot, then your variance will be 2 and 1/2 feet or 2.1 feet, whatever that is. I'm going to ask Mr. Bader, because it seems to me you've got to make that finding all the way down the road, so I'm going to ask Mr. Bader tomorrow to make his determination whether or not this complies with the dimensional requirement of 9822F. I'll do. You know, what can I say? If he says no, then I'll let you know. If he says yes, we'll do the appropriate application, but I don't know how you make this decision without having that issue in front of you. I just don't know. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the way you're running this business and giving us all an opportunity to be heard. Very much appreciated.
It's my pleasure, Ken. We're trying to do the right thing all the time here, best we can. All right. Heard from Ken. The public hearing is open still. Any other commentary do we have from the public?
I'd like to...
Dave?
May I respond to... Okay. I did make a submission to the ZBA. I think it was on the 3rd of July. I also submitted it in court about a week and a half ago. It's, Mr. Stanger has access to that. I don't know. I can't explain that comment from him. The submission is in many respects similar to the one that I submitted to the planning board. There's some additional information that I came across, including and reacting to some of the, you know, the very issues. What Mr. Stanger was arguing is the same thing he argued in court, and the judge, you know, did not find likelihood of success, which is what they...
That's not true, David. I'm sorry.
You're talking about process, Ken, and then you...
I'm not going to let you misrepresent what happened in front of me.
I'm going to have to ask you to let Dave say his piece, and then perhaps we can have some commentary here.
I mean, I, you know, it's fine for him to say that I didn't submit something, but then, you know, I'm just taking my recollection of what happened, and so I, yeah. But what he's trying, he's trying to, what he tried to do is to get the court to, he did say, and I will stand corrected there, he did say he wasn't stopping the ZBA and the planning board from acting, but effectively he was because what he was saying is that the boards could not make a determination as to the, as to the, I'm trying to remember how he put it, but it was the 12-foot, anything relating to the width of the easement. And that would necessarily, you know, so if an order is issued, some kind of a stay or whatever, you get into this legal tangle about whether, talking about the 12-foot access, which again, I'm perplexed because his client needs, he needs to maintain a lane of 12 feet. An easement, it's not a right, you don't own the property when you have an easement. You have a right of passage. So there's got to be a 12-foot access lane, and he's got to maintain it, or he'll be in violation of the zoning law. He blocked my access by building that stone wall. That's got to, that's got to be rectified, or give me a variance so I can, because I don't really care. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. It's a little tight, but it's fine. So he's just, it's just going around in circles. I mean, to have Mr. Mater, that would be the same thing as having the, as having the planning board do it, and that's what's in front of the judge. The very issue he's arguing now is what he's arguing in front of the judge, and that's what's, we're going to be briefing. So I think you guys just stay out of it and don't be, it's, you know, it is very creative argument, but I don't think it has any merit, and I don't think the judge is going to find it either. That remains to be seen. And it's Ms. Burgendorf, and she submitted a letter that explained what she did. I submitted, I showed it to another surveyor. What she was doing was she was taking 120 feet from the west boundary of the property, which is how the easement is laid out. It talks about 120 feet. That's where it's supposed to be, about 120 feet. The property is 121 feet wide. So what that means is that the intent was clearly that it was going to be right on the edge of the property, but nothing else makes sense. And again, I'm not going, we're getting back into the, into the issues before the court, but that's, again, all those issues of Terry Burgendorf, or Mr. Houston, or Nick Chappas, those are going to be before the court. And he's just, this is sort of, you know, an indirect way of trying to, trying to get you guys to weigh in on an issue that you don't have to weigh in on and shouldn't be weighing in on.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anything else? I have a question for Joe. Joe, Dave just mentioned that when there is an easement, as there is on 19 Memorial, that the property owner at 19 Memorial is required by that easement that was granted to maintain the 12-foot passage area. I just want to make sure that that is valid, and weigh, have you weigh in on your opinion?
Yeah, it's a colorable argument, and I would not make an opinion, you know, I would not settle on an opinion on the record that would fall on one party's side or another here, because it would be inappropriate and probably, well, not probably, also imprudently if I'm on the fly to do that. I will tell you that the argument that Dave was articulating isn't, is an argument that is, you know, colorable under the law, like it's, and that's why these guys are in court.
Right.
They're, you know, they've made prima facie arguments that have enough legitimacy to be heard by the court. And really beyond that, it's not even really fair for me to comment, but the basic, the basic premise is that your easement comes, when you're the beneficiary of an easement, it comes with a bundle of rights that either gets determined by the specific provisions of that written easement, or in the absence of those things, there's all kinds of, you know, judicial mechanisms for trying to come to an understanding of the intent of the parties when they entered into it. And it just, like I said, it would be imprudent and not appropriate really for me with respect to either of the parties.
Got it. And it seems to me that this is really... It seems to me that this is really an element for the courts to figure out, not really the zoning board of appeals. Our position here is really to make decisions about what people are asking and if they should be granted or not for whatever merit or not, lack of merit they have, but that it seems like there's a lot of legal stuff going on here that the courts are going to have to get involved in, and we really shouldn't be.
Yes, and I think too, again, I want to leave this open to, we're leaving the public hearing open anyway. Both sides are welcome to submit more on this point, but to speak briefly to Mr. Stanger's point about how would you determine what the extent of the variance is, which is one of the factors. I only want to say again, without speaking for the board in terms of which way would fall on the issue. When we put the pause button on, on this, when the easement issue first came up, it was, I believe, the first time we've seen the application, there was still a lot of questions to be asked about the nature of the easement, and there were obviously some issues, you know, the neighbors came in and made, you know, stated some concerns. We delayed because we sought more information and wanted to do some more homework ourselves, and that had a lot to do with the homework that I need to do for this board on its behalf on this issue. There's been progress in submission and legal research, and now a lawsuit, et cetera, that have, I don't want to say clarify is probably the wrong word, but have advanced this to the point where I think the ZBA could reasonably make a decision one way or another or the other, because what we do know as a baseline fact is how long, how wide that easement area is, or how wide that corridor is at its narrowest point, which is the pinch point of that wall. And so if nothing else, there is some parameter for determining the board level of comfort with that, and I would invite both sides to perhaps, you know, make submission, including the neighbor. What's the narrowest? If you don't think it's 21 feet, you know, if the argument is that there's no easement at all, I'm fairly comfortable saying that that's not the case. I don't think Ken has tried to advance that position either. So there's some easement there, right? And there's a physical obstruction there that makes it a definable width at its narrowest point. I'm not giving testimony here, by the way. I'm just saying, that's the premise, that's the kind of the nature of the inquiry that I think the board could make, and I think the issue of whether or not these other things ultimately get resolved in a manner in which the applicant's comfortable going forward and, you know, with their project, and there's a resolution of the issues, as, you know, then that's a, as a private dispute, they can sort out the particulars, either through some kind of stipulation or the court will tell them the answers. But I apologize if that's a little long-winded, but that's my take on that.
Thank you, Joe. I am going to ask for people to sit here patiently for a couple of minutes while I run up to the restroom.
You'll miss my apology.
What's that?
You'll miss my apology. I'll wait till you get back.
Yeah. Hold that thought, please.
When is your last day?
Tomorrow.
Why?
Tomorrow.
Thank you all, my apologies. My 19 years on the board, I don't think I ever run that. Because that was the first time. All right. Ken, you said you had something else to say.
Yeah, I do. I wanted to apologize to everybody sitting at that board. I don't like it when people misrepresent stuff that I participate in individually. That's what happened. But you guys are on a great board, and you invite people to come up and talk, and you keep people from shouting, and you, and I, you place a premium on listening while you're talking. I really like that. I really think it's wonderful, and I think I stepped all over it just then. And so I owe you an apology, so you have it. Thank you. I will come back, and I will continue to make my points, and thank you for listening today.
You're quite welcome. At this point, I'd like to invite the board to bring up any concerns, questions, issues that they may have with the information that you've been presented with tonight.
Just taking it all in as it comes, but it's very thorough and a lot to review and think about.
All right. As I mentioned, the public hearing is still going to remain open till our next meeting. I'd like to invite our consultants. Any other comments? I know Joe's had a few comments. Do you have as well?
I don't have any further comments.
No? Okay, great.
The only thing I want to make sure is on the record is that you're holding, I think just for the sake of clarity, it makes the most sense, although it hasn't been a very hot topic, hold both public hearings open. All public hearings open.
Yes. For the record, we are holding both public hearings open. Variance two, public hearing had been opened previously, that will continue to remain open. Variance one, which has to do with the access width, has been opened tonight and will remain We need to make a motion to, for, actually, we need to, we need to circulate our intent to become lead agency. I think we do, that we're going to do that before we classify this as unlisted, right?
You would classify the action first.
First, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we classify the action as unlisted regarding secret. I'd have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor of classifying this as unlisted? Say aye. Okay, all have voted. And now I'd like to have a motion for, to circulate our intent to be the lead agency, which means that we'll be determining secret evaluation.
I'll make a motion to start as lead agency for secret.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. Can I have a second? All in favor of circulating that intent? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have...
And involved agencies?
Yes, so all involved agencies will need to be notified.
So Dave raised the point of whether he asserted that some of these approvals may be ministerial. Regardless, I think we should circulate it, be them involved or interested agencies, and so that would be the village board and Pauling Joint Superior Commission.
Yeah, Dave, I know that you consider this to be ministerial. We've got to dot our i's and cross our t's.
No explanation. I'm very comfortable with that. It's fine.
Great. All right, so we're going to have to wait for the involved agencies to be alerted before we can move forward on secret, and we won't be able to make any decisions until after that point anyhow, so we're going to have to table any decisions until a further meeting in the future.
When will the next meeting be? Are you able to say that?
I think it's August 20... I think it's August 28th, is that Wednesday?
It's August 28th is the next meeting.
I'm corrected, it's August 28th.
So, will that give you enough time? I'm just, I'm just trying to think about that, is more than 30 days, will that time period have expired, so that we don't have to wait until September?
Should be announced, right? What are we on, what are we on, 23 now, 24?
24.
Today's the 24th, and I'll get everything out tomorrow.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, let me just take a look at my notes here. All right, I think at this point, we've covered all that we can regarding 15 Memorial, and we've previously covered the other project. I think at this point, it may be time to move on to, well, there's approval of the minutes. However, the minutes is about 10 pages long, and I just received them this evening, so I must be honest and say I have not had a chance to look at them. So, we're going to approve the minutes from the April 24th meeting at our next meeting. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at them, but I scoured my emails and couldn't find them, and Vivian was nice enough to give me a copy tonight, but it was more than a page or so. So, I want to make sure I give them a good once through. And then we have other business. For other business, we need to recognize that the planning board wants to assume lead agency for the project, I think it's 140-146 East Main.
149th Street, yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we accept their request for lead agency in determining Saker for that project.
One second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an approval for the other business?
And then you just need to sign.
Ah, all right. One day the signature will be famous. I can only hope, right? Consent, we do consent. All right, there you go, Vivian?
Thank you.
And I think, let me just take a look at my notes here, see if I'm missing anything. I think I've covered everything in my notes. There are many pages here, so hopefully I haven't missed anything. All right.
Did you guys do the minutes from last month?
We didn't.
Postponing.
We're postponing it because I just got them tonight, it's like nine and a half pages, and I wanted to give them a good read.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, we wouldn't have a quorum on that one, because I don't feel appropriately prepared. That being said, I guess we are ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Ken, would you care a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
We have unanimous vote, tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for joining us tonight, appreciate your patience, and your attendance.